I want to call the March 3rd workstation for Stellington Board of Education to order. First thing on the agenda is a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Got the second?
Second.
All in favor, uh, opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is invitation and Mr. Gustav Lewis will leave that for us.
Was Bauer Hicks. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here today. We pray for wisdom and guidance as we make decisions on behalf of families and students, our county. Pray that you guide us and direct us, help us to find the right decisions today. In your name.
Thank you, Mr. Australia. Thank you. You're welcome. Next on the agenda is the Andy Design Options and, um, if you've been taking care of that for us this morning, are you using that presentation? Or we just? They do have some attachments onboard dots for that that will kind of show you the designs.
I'll be quick, brief. If you look on your board docs, you'll see all the, uh, options and the furniture options and the furniture design, wall paint, all that except. Um, if you look, you'll see the green chair, but the greens, the chair is not green. It says the graphite back, that was just the image of the chair for you. Other than that, you need to take action on accepting all these colors and scheme and floor tile design and stuff like that where we move forward with. So, do you have any questions?
Any questions on anything that you're seeing there, any of the design or the design colors?
I do like the way the hallway or pattern. I think that adds a unique touch and design to that floor pattern.
That hall stripe is the lighter gray color, not the dark, it looks darker, like.
Sorry, Sean has it up now.
Is that white gray and dark gray or is it?
It is, uh, desk chairs.
No, go down. The hall. That's right.
So that what you just see on the out of half of the wall, that's just the wall, the CME wall. That's that area here. Your reference.
And that's the first picture.
That's the wall base.
Okay, that's just the bottom.
Yep, that's, that's the wall base that goes along the bottom of the wall.
And Mr. Benton, I remember we had found, we were in there, we went into those classrooms. The, the color of that classroom tile on the classroom wall. I know it's considered a antique.
It's considered an antique white color, which is just a little bit, has a little bit more shade than what this wall right here does. It's, it's, that's as close to the images as I can find.
They're really not quite that dark.
No, they're not.
That's why I'm.
Quite.
I was remembering it was not.
I just wanted to make sure that that hallway wasn't real dark. We have a couple hallways that have some dark.
No ma'am, the hallway, the hallway will not be dark, it'll be antique white with the, with your gray strip, uh, red strip and blue strip. And if you look on your bathroom design, um, if you got any questions there, just let me know. You could see the pattern here, the outlet at the top, um, in your spec sheet and each pattern has been labeled down below for you. So if you need to look through anything, you got any questions on that part?
Keith, can you get back to the furniture real quick?
Yes, sir.
Can you zoom in on the desk?
Yep. So your desk will be in this shape here and there's your pattern for your top with a graphite strip that'll be around the white trim where you see white trim here. That'll be your pattern for the top of your desk.
My question is, are those, uh, spring loaded pens that set the heights of the desk or are they screwed in?
No, they're screwed in, so they're just up and down.
So they, we're going to have spare?
Yes, sir.
And I think you had brought this out before to us that, um, the top of those desks.
There will be marker top.
Marker top.
So the kids can do math problems and stuff like that on top of it or whatever and be able to dry erase it off.
And designing the chair makes it easy to set it on top.
Designing that chair, slide it on top of it at the end of the day, the kids can pick it up, slide it on the desk and they're very lightweight. That way our custodial staff can go in and sweep the room every time.
The chairs, that chair is not adjustable in height and size or is?
On the back side, there is a few adjustments that you can get.
And we're not about to put tiny balls on the bottom of their legs.
No ma'am, so these will, these will have sliders on the bottom. Yep.
I will say that. Oh, that's fine.
That's, you're right.
And then I'm, I'm gonna assume that that desk can have an adaptable chair, but I.
It can, yes ma'am.
And it's wider than.
Yes.
It's hard to tell the shape of that desk, but it is not just a right.
It's not, it's not just rectangle. It's got some curve to it.
Right. It's hard to tell that by the picture. Any other questions?
I guess just comment for the, um, public information. These desks are better for, um, collaborative learning groups.
A whole lot.
Can be baked around.
Yes.
The attached things that we have.
Correct.
This is what the teachers are asking.
Yeah. Yeah, so we went with a collaborative space to where you can move them and manipulate them any way you want to.
And I think also getting back to the classroom design, the picture of the classroom design, um, which of us, I mean, I know you just. I like the, um, the cubby space and the hanging space for the footbag there. I mean, no longer are you designing stores that have lockers.
No ma'am, we're not. Especially elementary space, uh, you know, it's, it's used a lot more there than it is middle and high school spaces. Um, the teacher's desk, just wanted to point out, while we got it up, while Sean had it up, is, uh, the teacher desk is very mobile, it can be moved around the room so they're not just sitting in one spot. Uh, it flows and kind of slices. Sean has it. So, uh, and it goes up and down.
Yeah, some of our teachers that have those will actually put their desk up at collaborative learning space and bring it down so that they're at the same level of students. So, I guess that those are things that I know they've asked for.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll have some grove we should, to have new furniture.
And you might want to point out about the rub that they put on the floor.
Yeah, so it's, so we incorporated each classroom to have rubs sitting in it. Uh, we put in the staff that will potentially be going to that room, letting them have some input in it. So we tried to give them a little decorative rub, uh, in the furniture package and, uh, in each individual room.
And the staff was involved in?
Staff was involved in the color selection, the furniture style selection. The colors of the furniture, um, the rubs, um, and the floor tile and the paint schemes.
Any other questions? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the design as presented. I move to approve it divine as presented. Second, those in favor, uh, opposed? Motion passes. Next we have, uh, and Keith will be doing this also, it's a change order request. You have a attachment there for that in your board docs concerning some concrete area that we're wanting to do.
So what we're going to do is while that's coming up, so we're adding additional concrete to give them a future of an outdoor learning space. Right now is the time to do it. Uh, if not, then pre-mobilization is significantly changes in price. So right now you're looking at twenty one hundred, uh, two thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars to get that, uh, concrete space for future outdoor learning. Uh, it's better to utilize it now, move on with it. We do have contingency money that will cover this out of, so it's not a real true change order more to cost. It's just bring it to your attention, that's the cost of it, if you would like to move forward with it and we'll pull that out of contingency mode.
Um, question, so I know that it was specifically asked of specific tormentors before you came to the employment, those that this space be included in the project. I mean, was there a reason that that was left off the original plan?
Well, the original plan was approved once though, so anything outside the original plan has to require a change, uh, or a contingency.
Cause this is the space between the.
This is the, correct. So this is your, uh, existing building, there's your gymnasium. Um, the orange area is where we, uh, pursuing moving forward with making outdoor learning space.
I know your answer is there may be a drainage, this would be better than the grass would have been drainageable.
Correct, no, it's going to be better. So this area here, if we were, were to sow it grass, it would just be trampled to death. And plus there's not a lot of utilization sunlight through there to promote the growth of it, so we proposed to put a concrete pad in there. Um, it's a little bit more work on our side to keep it, you know, clean and pressure washed, but for the kids to be able to get out there in that environment, learn and have an outdoor space, we'd like to move forward with it.
Is there going to be an activity out there?
Not right now. So we plan to evolve into furniture out there in that space currently right now. Once we get the pad in, then they'll just come out there and see it and be able to have that environment. Um, we can move forward with going ahead and installing furniture now. Um, there will be a change in price, um, for that, but we can come back in as a staff later and do that a lot feasible or reasonable.
And then this is Sean's question, is there going to be an activity out there?
Yeah, we've, we've started this week actually with the contractors who connect all access points network, we follow these intercom.
Well, you need outside, the access point works, it'd be strong enough to come to the middle.
You don't typically put access points outside. I mean, you've got enough, particularly if it's right there, you should because probably we put some outside ones before, like on the middle schools and stuff, and they create a lot of interference from day to day inside the building. So, but the coverage is such that, you know, and sometimes, you know, being outside, being off technology is a viable tool to do so, but most time the coverage is well enough if they need to.
Definitely think that outside area, once you get it finished and we get furniture, I mean, it is set up the way we envisioned it to be, I definitely think that very. And I was like for, um, you know, Ms. Huntland talking about the furniture and stuff, I would even like the bad area to be something as, as the teachers, you know, are acclimated into that new building, you know, what are they seeing as far as furniture design or whatever, even, I mean, even students, the students, the student council, you know, what, what are they seeing will benefit them the most when you think about design? Because what I might want to put out there may not be, you know, the teachers here most likely.
It's not a that whole process was specifically brought up during the planning phase that did some personnel that did not make it on the plan, um, which is a little frustrating.
But we got that out there.
It sounds like we got it back on there. Um, cause I think students do benefit some from getting out of classroom and moving around. Teachers change of scenery sometimes, it's just good, so.
You have questions, comments? Any other questions, comments? I want to say I appreciate all this design. I hope I know that you helped it is for us to be able to see visualized. Um, I'm looking forward to, to the board, whatever, being able to go back out there now as we continue to get near to finish. It's moving along, it's on schedule?
Yeah, we're still on schedule, um, as of this moment right now.
Okay, so if there's no other questions or comments, then I entertain a motion to approve the change order as it is presented for an additional cost of two thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars for the additional concrete area. Got my motion to approve? Move to approve the change order as presented. Second?
Second.
Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, we appreciate all your work on that project. We're excited about that. So next on the agenda is any realignment, which is really, I guess, why we're here today. So, um, we had some additional questions that the board members had and they wanted some additional information from Mr. Miller from the lyrics. He is gonna be joining us remotely. Fingers crossed.
Please, please, let me tell, you ready for him to hop on it?
I did put together for you on board docs, basically all of the information, um, that was received from Mr. Miller along with the maps that corresponded to the information.
Are we gonna get the explanation that you guys got for each one?
If you have questions about those, you can definitely ask that.
No, I want, I want the presentation that the other board members were interested in.
The committee actually was the one that saw that presentation.
The only thing that was not was the map, but his written explanation of the board work scenarios was the board docs.
Where is that?
It's, it's there today. It's under annual work session. That detailed out for December and January.
What's the timeline? It's pop.
Oh, God.
Are there specific questions that you have, Ms. Poplin, about?
Yeah.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller, thank you for joining us. Can you hear us?
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, uh, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
But your, your audio is breaking up just a little bit, so, uh, there's something in the background too, Mike. I don't know if that's you repeated if I can understand.
While Ms. Poplin is looking at that, are there any other questions, um, about the information that you were given on board docs? That maybe Mr. Miller can help to clarify or answer any additional questions?
I guess my main question is, I'm sure revolved around the fact that losing the hundred and sixty students, which I'm never gonna go into grandfather. Is that known to alleviate the percentages at the schools? And, um, kind of revolves around, um, the presentation that you guys had, um, I guess, future planning for, um, Oakboro, its utilization will be versus, um, lines of relief for Stanfield rather than for. I mean, it's kind of like all of those things.
So we'll see another line shortly that takes in more students, because once we moved out of STEM kids and saw the lower number and the percentages that were going to go down or how much it was going to go down with the schools, we've got another scenario that takes another chunk out for the lowest end, I believe. And that puts the capacity at the end much higher and lowers the capacity at Stanfield.
Okay, so this is a new one.
There's gonna be one more, yes. And that was, that's been created in the interim since our last.
Mr. Miller?
Let me let him go over that before I, cause that may change.
They were inquiring, uh, it was, I don't know if you heard the question, but I, I think the gist of it is, um, is the additional or the, uh, first proposed line enough to bring in enough students to, um?
Why don't you show them my lines?
Okay.
Go ahead and go into that.
Okay, so just to make sure that we're all on the same page, at, as of today, there are two scenarios for Indy that are floating around. One of them was, uh, presented back in, in December. And the second one was presented in January. Uh, they're, they're, they're very similar. The second scenario, which I call revision one, extends a little bit farther into Lucas and a little bit farther in Stanfield. Uh, the numbers are actually pretty significantly different for Indy. The first scenario sends about five hundred seventeen kids to Indy. The second scenario sends about five hundred seventy-six. So it's an increase of, of at least fifty more children to Indy from, from both of Lucas and Stanfield. Uh, the question is, is that enough for, uh, for a long-term solution? Uh, my opinion is no, it's not. And I think you're gonna need additional seats in that area, um, to accommodate for the long-term growth that you're seeing by moving into five and ten years. But as a midterm solution, the, the second scenario, revision one, as I'm calling it, does provide a little more, uh, breathing room.
But Mr. Miller, um, I don't think we've seen the second match. Okay. So under the option two, uh, and going back to the exploratory scenario where the committee had asked to look at Richcrest, to look at Oakboro as a new school, um, a districted school, larger capacity, and to look at redistricting west in the middle. Um, and so going back to Oakboro, which, uh, seemed to be the, the recommendation, it seemed to fit the best for the longer term need, uh, with increased capacity in that municipality. Does option two, would that mean more kids have to be redistricted to Oakboro versus option one, should there be a new school in Oakboro?
Did you hear that?
Yes, I, I did. Uh, the way I see it, um, the Oakboro is, is somewhat of an isolated case in this point. Uh, I was given a capacity of six hundred to work with for Oakboro. Uh, we haven't really discussed whether that would be K five or K eight. I think there's ample room to bring STEM students back from grade six and eight into Oakboro if that's what you choose. But assuming that my assumption is right, let's go with K five and make Oakboro, uh, big enough to impact Stanfield, uh, especially. I'm gonna open up my scenarios now so I get like, uh, names straight, you hear me?
And I guess I'm asking if, if there's like an overlay map. So, um, based on our discussions and, um, on the exploratory scenarios, the intent was the, the board likely wants to pursue a new Oakboro school with a much larger capacity. We own the land, it's in the municipality, it makes transportation efficient, it, uh, doesn't necessarily increase our cost. Uh, it seemed to fit in your projections longer term, uh, to alleviate the, the longer term western in crowding and growth. But relative, uh, it was that northern corner of Stanfield that should there be a north, um, a Stanfield School District, should there be a, a new Oakboro, that that little piece, um, of students would be subject to redistricting from Indy back, uh, or into Oakboro, which is going into highway two oh five. So I want to know if this option two scenario, does that extend out the number of students that would get redistricted a second time?
Yes, there are, there is overlap. That's the right word. Uh, you know, the, these scenarios were designed, the Oakboro scenario was designed to, to see what would happen if Oakboro opened and we didn't change Indy very much, if at all. So it's, it's really provides a, a benchmark on how effective Oakboro can be to accommodate future growth. But if the board chooses to go ahead with either, uh, option one or, or the first scenario or the revision of that, yes, I can see there'd be some students that would be reassigned twice. Yes.
And in option two, does that present more students that would be reassigned a second time?
Yes, sir. If you want to make sure that Oakboro reaches its, uh, higher potential to provide relief, yes.
Okay, so it's, it's my assumption then, based on this data, that with a new Oakboro school at a much higher capacity, in this case, six hundred, that if we went with option one, that presents the least amount of students that would have to be redistricted a second time to a new potential Oakboro school.
At the moment, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
At the moment.
Um, Mr. Miller, can we get, just for public transparency and for board members that were not in on that proceeding, can we get pros and cons of option one versus option two or revision one? I'm not sure which one.
Okay.
Sure.
We have it, thank you.
Uh, I, I, I think if, if Oakboro is not on the table, if, uh, there aren't any options to increase the number of seats, uh, in this area that would impact Lucas, Stanfield especially, then I think you should extend Indy as far as you can. But depending on when Oakboro opens, if Oakboro is a, a path that the board chooses, uh, then, then I think it gets a little more complicated. You may be able to not extend so far, uh, with Indy and wait until Oakboro opens. Uh, the one thing I don't know is how long that would take. And I'm not sure, uh, board knows that either. I have no idea how long it might be until Oakboro might, uh, open its doors. So that's kind of the, to me, that's the crux of it there. How long can, uh, the, the district handle the numbers until Oakboro is open or another plan for adding seats to this area, uh, comes about?
I think it will depend on, on what we hear on the next, uh, agenda item as far as like where we stand with transfers to what those percentages are, to know whether that line is far enough out to actually relieve the situation we have.
Meaning that if, if the board does some work with transfers that, uh, that may help the situation for Lucas and Stanfield? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I got you.
I think the other thing that you were alluding to, Mr. Miller, is the fact of, um, Oakboro, at least right now, I know that, um, our board certainly is looking at the, the new school, the new school of Oakboro. That's a part, that would be a part of a, a needs-based grant. And when you're saying, you know, you don't know how far out that is, we don't know how far exactly out that is as well. Um, hopefully, you know, we're keeping our fingers crossed, hopefully, that will be something that will happen as soon as we can get approval and funds, if we can get that for it.
So I guess what, what my question is and, and to put things in perspective to tie that together. So realistically, we're looking at three to four years before we can get the doors open to a brand new Oakboro Elementary School. So what my question is, Mr. Miller, was a realistic view of three to four years, maybe five, depending on everything, how everything goes. Um, what is your suggestion then? Option one or option two, just to make it clear?
That's a good one. Uh, to me, the, the, uh, threshold for resigning students is at, at a minimum of three years. In other words, in between a school's opening or lines changing, um, I've seen it happen, but it's, it would never be a recommendation to do it, uh, any less than three years, five years. You know, you have almost all of the student population matriculating out. It's, it's a little easier to understand. Uh, but as far as how far Indy should go, if you're going to open, open, I think for the long term, I would rather see Indy, uh, not as expanded, not expand as far. Because I think that's number one, it's going to, uh, minimize the students that may be reassigned twice. And number two, I think that may give, uh, more flexibility for any other, other places too, if it's necessary. So I, I would tend to kind of side towards the, uh, option one, the first, the first one that doesn't push Indy out as far, if you knew that Oakboro was, uh, gonna come in within five years. But that's a, that's a tough one.
And I have to follow up to that, Mr. Miller, with that option one, I noticed that, um, in the original numbers, that Aquadale was vastly approaching that red bar. How does that factor into option one in three and about years? That's, that's kind of the timeline we're looking at.
Oakboro does. It's sitting in the Aquadale District right now, just barely. So it's going to take a, a, a pretty good chunk from Aquadale, uh, if Oakboro, it's a, at currently, neither option or the first scenario or its revision touch Aquadale at all, Aquadale at all.
And according to those original numbers, and I didn't pull that up, if, do you know what the percentage of, um, capacity was at Aquadale?
Uh, I can pull that up just a moment.
Ninety-four, okay. So option one does not touch that and option two does not touch that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh, the big reason there is the, is the middle feeder pattern. If you wanted to, uh, provide some relief to Aquadale, you'd more have to consider what, what the middle school situation would be.
All right, okay. Thank you.
And the, the numbers that we're searching for, uh, Aquadale would go from, uh, high nineties to low to mid eighty percent utilization. So it's taken a pretty good chunk in, in Oakboro itself.
That's with the Oakboro school situation, it goes down to eighty something. Okay.
Good question. There's no real, we're leaving Aquadale with I want to redo it for teen. It's central, not close to, that's, that's in central.
Well, really, first central to is your largest classroom for downstairs and that's where all the kindergarten.
In other words, we're basically, we're stuck now on the west end. But we stuck to the west and we're actually stuck in I want to get by like that.
Yeah, so we actually took, um, and Keith and I digitally managed both elementary schools and Alamo. Because it's deceiving if you look at the passing, which you could actually do, especially with a multi-story central.
Kindergarten's campfire.
There's, there's, there's some reason you could negotiate some things, but for all intents and purposes, you can't, you can't bring up, yeah, or just not have a kid.
That's how I understood it. It was a low, we're, both Aquadale becoming an issue is another, uh, option for building Oakboro more attached to them. That's also trying to get to the bottom.
Yeah, I, I just, going back and looking off, I noticed that Aquadale was very high too. And I wa, wanted to see if it was gonna, this new option or the other options touched it at all. Um.
No, it is not.
Okay.
Any other questions? I still, from what he has said in discussion that has been presented so far here, in, in the back of my mind, I still, the one point, um, is clear to me, I don't want to have to reissue students. I want, that's, that is something that I think we have to really consider.
We're, we're explaining two things. The weather, the speed at which it, I was already thinking my line, I don't have to be. move on, or have to be reached or twice, or the speed at which the other schools are gonna continue to develop. So those are the two things you're really gonna have to make a decision on. That's the difference between option one and the revision.
But if there's not any Locust, or if there's no new construction, no new capacity deal, we're right back here in a few years.
Five years.
Having to think about how to re-district.
How many years you think if we'd be back, uh, to where we are now, Mike, if we took the lesser number?
Uh, I think it might be within five years.
Okay.
With the state of BPI and the new, um, administration, are we even sure that these grants are gonna be at things five years?
I don't know, and I'm, I'm not telling you, because I do not know this, but I know there's been some talk about some of these grants, or that just money's helping with the western killer.
Yes, so.
But that's not been galvanized.
The county needs to do it regardless.
Yeah. It may not even be an option for us in five years, depending on, um, because I know we have, I know sort of what I believe you got, is, um, I know that we have several schools that were, um, vastly in insurance, or not other than tops, that, um, diverting those funds. So when we sit here saying we're gonna have a new Oakboro possibly in five years, we have a hard time getting commissioners to sign off on a five percent match at this point, then we're looking at building other schools with just the commissioners and, and our own, whatever money you want to try to get into the new school. So, um, I'm just wondering, if, if we move these students and we upgrade all these folks, are we gonna be right back here in the same situation in five years with those new buildings? Um, and looking at the same lines again, uh, and then probably different situation, and that's what helped, probably Alamooral by that point in time, so.
Hopefully not. I mean, I think the tour with commissioners opened their eyes and the county manager, as millions having to go into this building that literally the structure of the low-bearing wall are, are paving in. Uh, they're gonna have to do it, county regardless, one way or the other. I feel like the appetite of the board is like, how do you accomplish the goal of lowering these capacities and affecting the least amount of families possible?
And I, I'm like, you know, it's, I don't want to move towards fly supply, I would question the extent, like, one time versus, that's why I wanted to be fair, set up the two options, but what, what does that look like? Because, um, especially for certain populations, movement is not easy, um, I'm not, you know, negating some children, I don't want to move away from their friends, but for certain ones, it's, it's more difficult. And I just want to make sure that this big decision, and that the board, you know, explores all the options before we make the decision on where we want that line to be.
There's a lot of ifs, yeah, um, that we don't, you know, we, we don't have answers to, we don't know whether we will get a needs-based grant. But we do know that having a new Indy school, or having a new Oakboro school in that area of our county is not just a luxury item that we're looking for, it's a need, it, it's a must at this point, that we have to have. Whether we are granted anything from a needs-based grant or not, it's something that our commissioners are gonna have to step up and, it's, it's a must if it's.
And when it be in a choice school, we have students that live in Oakboro, their district into Oakboro, or Oakboro proper, whatever you want to call it, they cannot attend their school.
They could see it.
I think that's a problem. They may live across the street from it, but they can't hop on the bus and get over there, and I've always felt that was the issue, and that pans out prior boards before we're getting this far that we're sitting here, so, um, you know, that's a problem too, uh, when you have, we're pumping kids from the entire county to the school, that we face that potential to sit two streets from each other, so.
That's why we need the school to large capacity, that can be where we can have that school within a, a school and still keep, because we, you know, we, we love the STEM program that, you know, works so well. And then when you brought up about Aquadale, and how that's gonna help there, and then the next task on this board will be Alamooral situation.
Yes.
We're already, we're already over capacity at West Mill. Whatever decision we make, some of these kids are gonna get moved twice. Unless we decide to put the trailer park out of West Mill, we're gonna have to change the feeder pattern, we're gonna have to change the feeder pattern.
Well, and that was.
If we fix the K-5, if we fix the K-5, it goes further. Even mine, Alamooral's got middle school kids too, but, so those kids have to go somewhere. But what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm afraid there's gonna be some kids that get moved twice, that's gonna have to change the feeder pattern, middle school and high school. West Stanley's in the red, and now it's low capacity. It's out of line. West Middle, overcapacity. Yeah, just, Peters, Peters won't put those kids at West Stanley middle. The Peters schools are overfalling out, we're gonna be putting more kids in West Middle, which puts more kids in the standard high school. I'm saying, we're gonna have to, because that's my basic service, there's nowhere around it. If we get a new Oakboro, I'm praying that we do, if we get a new Oakboro, it only solves one level of the problem. West Mill's got to either grow, or it's redrawn. What's the, is it, what's the deal with the extension of West Mill? We can add on to the wing.
Yeah, I understand.
Right.
Depending on the room, there's not a prescribed size.
Uh, we could add, we can add a ten, ending. Theoretically, if it started running a hundred dollar bill, we could add twenty classrooms to West Mill.
I would think so.
Ten or twenty, whatever, give it ten, ten rooms.
Well, it's expandable on two different parts. So, yeah, you could add a pod on each side, a less middle.
He's just asking, would there be a possibility of adding twenty classrooms?
Yes, we, there would be a possibility that, we'd have to make some, uh, driveway improvements along with the, but it should, the, the building sits in, in the head building to expand, the way the building sits now.
Well, and according to, um, what Mr. Miller had here, um, there was an exploratory scenario, but it says that it was not a clear feeder pattern, is that what we're saying?
This didn't make any sense, because we looked at redistricting, middle schools of all the municipal forums that mentioned, and it, there was not a good, clean way to do it. And back to your point, I think, your point, uh, like even with a new Oakboro school, they still, we don't have capacity at the middle or high school, you, you have a split feeder pattern. So unless we have a, a new middle school addition and a larger high school, the Oakboro continues to, it's a split feeder. The, um, Stanfield side of Oakboro will be Western.
It would have to continue a secondary.
Southern end.
It would continue the second entry.
Which, th- then you go down to South Stanley, where the HVAC system's old, the roof is old, they're outdated, you've got lots of problems, that's millions of dollars of renovations that aren't gonna be needed.
So just to throw this in there, when we're talking, um, Aquadale and South and West Stanleyville, um, those development, or those developments that are right on the fringe as the Alamooral, that are districts into Aquadale right now, does that come up at all when he was doing all the scenarios to, to, to alleviate Aquadale? However, I don't know exactly where we could have them sit either, um, but it's not too blurred for people to say, for them to go to Indy. Does that come up at all, um, during the scenario?
Like, where it was almost complete, like, where it, Alamooral, Morgan Hills.
Like, Morgan Hills.
Here, over ninety percent are right at ninety percent at Central, and about seventy percent at, at East Alamooral, but those.
Maybe new growth there, others were in the, instead of.
Yeah.
Outlaw, did that come up at all?
Hmm, no.
I think it's just in our conversation, you know, the board, as we continue to have conversations about ourselves.
It hasn't expanded outside the exploratory scenarios, that's all I guess, because that was like the immediate need, and due to the board now, because we, I think maybe you were still on the committee, then we, you, maybe you, we asked the commissioner about an addition at West Stanley middle, and they seemed open to it.
Right.
And realized the need, as you pointed out, we're a hundred and thirteen percent, and we looked at Mr. Miller to redistrict it to solve that, and it didn't make any sense, so here we are, we need new capacity in the Western end, the elementary, and the middle school under the current feeder pattern.
Or change feeder pattern, and also.
Or change the feeder pattern.
Trying to advocate with the kids.
Exactly.
I'm at the West Stanley Peters school, I ended up going to South Stanley, I'm, I think that, I think that's what we're gonna have to do. Right now, we are a, uh, we're a combat fatlanders waiting to death, we gotta fix the hammer, K-5, but that, that whole problem system has created, we don't do something about West Mill, have to do. Ideally, what I see as the fix for five to ten years, you Oakboro, and we have to move the feeder lines to that, and an addition that you, the West Mill, actually an addition in West Mill, because that building was built with the understanding, if you have to down the road, you can make better. What's the other middle school can do there?
Or, or maneuver in.
North Stanley.
Or maneuver in Alamooral and pull those districts back to town, so it's not even a lot of the Western.
Now, the committee did ask Mr. Miller, and I don't, I, I think it was in, um, at our last meeting, to, in, at, once we get through this, to start taking a look at, um, at the high school.
Yeah.
Like, is it four, is it three, is it two? Like, we think it's two, but it could be three, what, what's the data say? Like, and how would all that work to do our best? And Mr. Miller, I don't want to speak for you, but, um, per his comments, we are teetering on, as Union County did, um, years ago, of, right now, we have clean feeder patterns, but it's getting to a point where it's not gonna work.
Yeah.
And so we, we've asked for some scenarios, um, for, for future planning, that what, what does our high school look like, and how do we need to invest in the high school, middle school, or patterns, and, and, and how do you redistrict to solve the longer-term growth for Alamooral? Because, you know, we talked about moving east over to the middle school, and middle school to the high school, and having a new high school.
And that's, that's what I was wondering, those fringe developments, they're right on the edge, I mean, technically, they're in city limits, but they're not in Alamooral district on our map. Um, so that, that's what I was saying here, there's several, and those are growing, and people are moving out there, I, how many fat students, Mr. Miller probably knows, but,
That's a future conversation.
Yeah, but, but, um, you know, when we're talking on this, this is not gonna be the last time we have to do the line, or something, um, for the Western end or for the city, um.
We got to deal with the growth that we didn't have.
Exactly, um, and it doesn't seem to be slowing down.
And I think that's a decision that our board, as they continue to make those developments, wherever they are, uh, it can be a board decision as to where they have school.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, we're, we're going to have to do that, I mean, with, the Bell first of all has to be upfront with people who are gonna be buying homes in these developments, the board has made a decision that there is room here, and this is where they're gonna have those schools, especially to a week year to the building of new high school.
And I did have a conversation with one municipality that was approving, and told them, I said, I cannot speak from the board, but the board will have to look at lines, if you start building all these, these, you know, perimeter of these different boundaries, they're gonna have to look for the best fit, so if you're approving it, you tell the, whomever that's buying the land, who's are developing, don't count on what you have today, because if the board sees a need, they'll have to.
Right.
Investigate at least.
That, it might not be, if they're building there where they were, we're talking about, your child may not be going to the West End, and they may not be being into, they may have to be into Southern, where we have.
That's, that's, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get.
We have the ability to reach out to a new neighborhood that's coming in and say, if, if you build here and you purchase here, this may have been your district before, though, but we can pull that area there to whatever area we feel is best suited, so. Um, I, I know we've thrown out a lot of topics, and, and there's definitely things that we're gonna have to have discussions on, but if, I feel like if we can kind of get back to where, what our topic is today, and which is the realignment of Indy, and how we're gonna handle the Stanfield-Locus, um, kind of get back to that, if there are any other discussions on that. Anything else for Mr. Miller? Um, if there's not, and we're ready to move on and have a discussion about the transfer policy, we can do that, um, whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Sorry. You move him anymore?
Anything else for Mr. Miller, any other questions, um, comments, concerns, while we have him?
Um, just to, to, well, is he gonna stay on for the transfer policy discussion?
He can, if you like.
Um, well, I just, do we know how many transfers are in the board? Um, I know, but, but this is gonna affect whether I have to stay on, I guess, I can chase out, if they're kind of, I, yes.
Well, just this range of options. Do you want to hold this?
It will, again, we don't want to go.
But what's trying to transfer again to?
I just, the title. Maybe I just ask, Mr. Miller, your opinion on, on transfers and transfer policy, if we were to go with option one? Um, what is the percentage that we're able to allow for movement and stay within the numbers we need to stay in? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Uh, this is one of the authority parts about this planning process. Scenarios that you're looking at, all the numbers assume that the current transfers that go to Locust or Stanfield or Indy are gonna stay there. It, it's an estimation, you know, we do the best because parents have a change of heart, certainly when, especially when school lines change. But right now, the scenario looks at those transfer patterns being the same. I think your deeper question, if, if I understand it correctly, is if, if the board times up on transfers, how's that going to, uh, affect these numbers? And I, I don't have the answer, uh, to that yet, I, I kind of have some estimates based on, based on my data, but I'm not sure that's gonna be as accurate as yours. The key thing is exactly how many transfers and for what reasons, uh, are you currently experiencing to and from those three schools?
Right now, we only have twenty, at Locust, there's twenty-four non-employed, non-rising sixth-grade students. At Stanfield, there's five. Sorry, twenty-four overall, nineteen at Locust, five at Stanfield, twenty-four overall, who are non-employed, non-rising sixth graders.
Those are the ones.
So if you look.
Those are the ones coming in May, right now?
No, those are distinct ones. So he's, he's got those baked into the projection.
Okay.
So when you look at the known transfers to the school, and you look at those with that list in the email, and you sort it out, and you pull out all the employees, and you pull out the current fifth graders, which are going away to the middle school, what's left are nineteen at Locust and five at Stanfield.
And how many do we have incoming from Locust that are in the portal for May?
Uh, I don't know, but that question answered, but it's not in the projections that Mr. Miller, because it's an unknown.
Right, right. But we, we have a database that we know how many have asked to go to the, somewhere.
We, I pulled the total ones that you'd asked, we have a hundred and fifty-four that is so-called, and that's, that's excluding.
We just asked him, come on, the.
That's how many have put into a transfer for the district thus far.
County-wise.
County-wise.
That's county-wise.
County-wise.
Do we know how many of those?
Which is normal.
That's normal.
Last year, there was three hundred.
Yeah, that's, that's, um, um, we, we know how many of those have, that's about those two schools, or, well, I, let's say three, because Indy could be in that too. Right, yeah. So we would need the number of three.
Just type her up, please.
Yeah, that's fine. For sure.
But they may go through anything yet as far as, you know, like with.
It's how many, how many are sitting there, but I'm asking, like, how many are potentially sitting there that may in, uh, in front of us?
The good thing about that is, is we can control those.
Yes, that, that, those aren't, those aren't going to. To see how many, um, or we should be, should be.
Last year, it was a ten percent.
Yeah.
Rate that got to.
Right.
So out of the three hundred-plus appeal, um, appeals. So out of the three hundred plus appeal, um, appeals, ten percent of the maybe.
Ten percent of them.
Yeah. Plus or minus. But there's not, I mean, you look at those numbers and your timeline that you mentioned before, that the board is going to have to tighten up. Like, you're just not going to have.
Definitely this conversation is going, in my mind.
For future requests.
Yeah, for anything beyond, that's if we leave things like they are right now, don't move anybody fired today. Um, you know, we've got a hundred and fifty-four, I don't know how many of those are asking to go to those three schools. But we're going to have to take a very hard, fast look at where we are, because, um, with those percentages being so high very quickly, and that's not accounting for anybody that randomly decides to move to Lucas, which is.
Another thing we don't.
Yeah, yeah, that we have no way of knowing. And and sometimes kindergarten don't pre-register. They shut up the day up. And that's another, I know, so you really have to be very mindful of how close we're sitting to that hundred percent.
Well, and and to respect to the data.
Yeah.
And the regression analysis, that's baked in.
Yeah.
While projected kindergarten enrollment, movement into the city, so far, it's been margin of error less than one percent. So we can make an assumption that what he's come up with is plus or minus one percent of those. And Mr. Miller, just for a clarifying question on the, uh, that updated number on option one or option two, you removed out any Oakboro STEM students. That correct? Because I think a few of those were excluded.
Yes, that that's correct, yeah. There. Those are considered, when you're talking about Stanfield as an example, those are not considered base students for Stanfield. They don't go to Stanfield, so they're not counted on that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so it looks like at Lucas, it only moved it under option one, three students. I believe the first number was four seventy-seven, and there it's four seventy-four.
Yeah.
Sean, can you give me that? So we got ninety-eight students from like the city in fifty-six. We have to say that from here.
And all the STEM students around them.
Okay.
Question? It's like you asked.
The option two may have a few kids who are on transfer, because that number could be, say, one twenty-eight. So this this number right here is fairly exact. And that's the one we've been working on for some time, to identify those kids, because I think you had to notify them. This one is probably more in line, this one. And again, these numbers also include fifth graders that will be moving on. But it gives you an idea of total numbers. So if you got fifteen fifth graders going, chances are you may have fifteen kindergarteners involved. Could be more, so.
An option or the first revision, really, he's just blowing up part of the map right there on the boundary. Right here, just in case that doesn't look right.
This is Indy eighty-nine percent, correct? Lucas is what? I can't.
Hundred and five.
Make that larger.
Sure.
I appreciate that. There we go, there we go. Ninety-five. That's just the current movement of students in that line.
And just through your, you see the box with a hundred and fifty-six there? Or that little triangular piece with the road that makes, that's the piece, that that's like going into Oakboro. That should there be a new school withdrawal, that that small subsection back here.
Like where that.
Almost with the old one.
It's where that got.
Option two right here is coming down this road.
Not not option two, not under the exploratory section. Yeah. Just for your.
Yeah, yeah. I'm I'm, I'm just trying to. Wait, they were. These are act option.
Just assumed in area is what I give you some context.
So right now, as far as your transfers that are in the portal, there are six, new ones for Lucas, five for Stanfield, eight for Indy. That does not include. There's six for Lucas. Five for Stanfield. Eight for Indy.
I will, I will say this, what I was talking to you about this morning, I got the number, Dr. Ned, so the redistricted student for Lucas and Stanfield, I'd asked about how many of those were employees, because those are not going to be transfers baked in.
Right, right.
That we will, we will approve, or Dr. Murray will approve, or whatever makes it up for school. And we know that his number, like four total at Lucas, none, zero at Stanfield. So when we look at option one, it's four seventy-four. Well, we know four transfers are going to get approved because they're employed children, once they're settled. So it's four seventy-eight.
Okay.
As you're, as you're working.
As far as employees, it's two for Stanfield, one for Lucas.
This number has.
Two percent.
All transfers removed.
One for Lucas.
That's in the portal.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we know we're at four seventy-four plus four employed children and siblings uh, that are that are going to get approved. They're they're there now at Lucas. It will be redistricted to Indy, then will get approved to come back. So you're working off four seventy-eight. Then plus whatever these transfers were.
And so so four seventy-eight, we're at four seventy-nine.
Four seventy-nine. Yeah, I I mean.
Like, I'm I'm math, and I can hear you. Give me a second. All right, so four seventy-nine, and then Stanfield is going to be.
You said two at Stanfield.
Four thirty-nine.
Two Stanfield, one Lucas.
And one at Indy is going to put his best, five fourteen, is that right?
Uh, five, two at Indy.
Oh.
Two Stanfield, two Indy, one Lucas.
Two Stanfield, one Lucas, one Indy from the portal list, inside the portal.
Yeah, and that's my fault.
Okay, so four seventy-nine, four thirty-nine, five fourteen. I don't know how that changes the percentages.
But I think it matters going into the last topic discussion on the.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what, okay. That's that's what I needed to try to wrap my brain around about talking about.
Dr. Ned, which which schools we could have 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 waited in class hours, maybe. Last year, it was, we got it right at Lucas this year, because we go to North.
Okay.
Norwood and Stanfields before, at Stanford. So that's.
But again, to control this, and you're looking at percentages, the utilization of percentages. When housing developments are going up, and even if those housing developments are going up, say, in the Stanfield area, new area, that's not something that this board, I mean, this board can say that they will be going to the southern district.
Correct.
They they will feed into the, that development will feed into the southern district. We have that option. We have that option.
There's two, two more phases that are going up in in Oakboro, as I understand.
Oh, my God.
But I think that's, I mean, again, and I know I'm getting a little long, so I'm just going to state it, that in order for us to maintain our best at weakening is to not overcapacity the school. We will have to make the decision with these developments that are being built, whether that's in the Alamo area and they tend to be the northern district, or they can dump it up southern. We will have to control that until we're able to move into what, what are we going to be doing with hospitals? Down the road, but but the road's a hot spot, I mean, it's here. And so.
I feel like we're sitting in the middle of that right right now.
And so in order for the board to control it, that's what we will have to start doing as a board, is any of these developments that are going up, wherever they are, especially in the Alamo area or the western end or whatever, we have that option. Because we can't continue to put them in.
And those developments are things that we haven't really paid really close attention to.
Well, we look at, we look at the number, and the, you know.
It's easy for those to pop up.
Right.
And we've been out of the loop.
And we have to control it while we're trying to get the funding for a new Oakboro to help in the way that they, and what we're going to do with hospitals.
If we get back to transfers.
Well, I want to clarify something on the transfer list, too. So as the board is looking at it, and we talked about twenty-four non-employed, non-rising sixth grader students between the two schools. You have the Lucas.
Yeah. Backwards.
Backwards, yeah. Yep.
So.
So you got twelve Stanfield at Lucas and four Lucas at Stanfield.
That serves a purpose in my mind to revoke and say, we're going to send someone back Lucas, we're going to send someone back.
Doesn't accomplish the goal.
That's what I'm saying. It's not giving us a new PC. Tamara wants just to disturb the least amount. Well, I mean, that's why I, that's why I'm here when you say that. That's mine.
My view is to affect the least amount of families as possible to accomplish the goal. If it doesn't do anything to further accomplish the goal, but we only upset more students and families, I don't see where that's makes any sense.
You just play another side of that. The only thing in my mind that it would do is it's level the. If you live in the district, you can go to your school. We're not allowing anybody who doesn't live in the district to go to the school. No, I don't want to lose any more seats somehow, but that would level, you know, why Sally and not John? We both live in Lucas. Sally got told she's got to go to Indy, don't fear, and I want to go to Stanfield.
So I don't know if I'm jumping ahead to the policy, but if we were to do that, which I am all for not upsetting families, if we were to do that, would we not be adhering to our own policy?
Board doesn't make a revoke or rescind according to the policy. That is something that the superintendent has the ability to revoke or rescind a transfer.
No, I'm talking about putting them back at their home school.
The superintendent makes that decision.
Yeah, if if the school is full, and he needs to see, he can say, you know.
They can submit a deal.
But essentially, we are saying the school is full.
But it's adhering to what our policy states is where I'm getting at.
If you go against the call, I'll see you after this.
Okay, that's what I want to, yeah, thank you. That's what I wanted to say.
Because essentially, by moving the lines, I mean, telling them they're being redistricted, we are saying school is full. Otherwise, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing it, right?
School is over capacity.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so.
I think the transfers and the grandfathering are all kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They rush together.
The difference is in the projection, the numbers already baked in the existing transfers.
Yeah, and.
So it doesn't count any future transfers or any grandchild.
And if my math is correct, if we just approved the Lucas, Stanfield, and new transfers that are in the portal, I don't know what they face, we have to. It will be a four eighty-five at Lucas, four forty-four at Stanfield, and five twenty-two at Indy. I don't know what that does to those.
Four seventy-nine at Lucas and four thirty-nine at Stanfield.
If we approve the ones that are in the portal, like if we just blatantly said yes to all of ones that are out there.
Oh, okay.
I I don't know what they are, or what their hardship is, so I can't, I can't say, but if we did, I just, those are the numbers. Uh, no, I don't know what this percentage.
And there there could be a true hardship. I I mean, it could be a few little things that fall within the policy.
Somebody's in the middle of divorce, and by the summer, August, they're going to be living in that area.
That probably would never make it to the board, though.
That's what I'm saying. If if those make it through the process, and we have a process for that, that's what those numbers look like. That's what I was trying to get to. Um, because we don't, we don't know what they are right now.
I I don't think we, like we just said, if we can't just sit here and make a blanket statement and say, well, if we do this, we're we're never going to approve any more transfers to those schools.
Right, because some of them are.
There are, there are extenuating circumstances and things that may fall within, or.
But like Ms. Ned said, those those will be taken care of before they ever.
That's why I wanted to give that exact number, so that if for some reason all of those were actual true hardship things that we have to follow, that's what the numbers look like.
I don't know. Is Mr. Miller still along with us? I think he is. He didn't have anything else for him, and if not, we can. We can let it go. Any other questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mrs.
We appreciate you joining us today.
Love, thank you.
I think that one thing that needs to be said, it's obvious that when you do, no matter which line of approval, the transfers.
Yeah, that's, I feel like anybody that we move is going to move. So when we're looking at four eighty-five, we might be really looking at five of them. And we look at, you know, five twenty-three, ending. I I don't know what that, you know, number may look like. My kids are going to get to move on whatever to Indy, or, I mean, um. Yeah.
I think the board, we're just going to have to commit to doing a better job at handling the transfers than I feel like what we've done in the past. It's easy to sit there and say, are you warned us last year?
Several years, and it's, it's not an easy process.
It's a very difficult task. You have a parent or a grandparent sitting in front of you, and there are some extenuating things, so. But we we will need to just be a little more diligent with those. Any anything else that anyone wants to, wants to throw out or discuss or questions about the transfer, if we want to just go on and talk about grandfathering?
I think, I think it goes together. It's hard to say if I have any more questions until we talk about, talk about the others, but.
They have to kind of be looked at as a.
It overlaps.
It does.
I mean, it, it does.
So grandfathering, I know we we've had a spreadsheet where it basically showed us what the fourth and rising, fourth and fifth graders were, or Stanfield and Lucas, and also their siblings included in that.
Yeah, so the rising fourth and fifth grade list should all exceed that last week. As we got the final update, we talked, just talked about like the four employed kids that are part of the redistricting line that will come back in as a transfer. Those are in the Lucas side, so you see forty-one on the list. Two are rising fourth graders, employees, parents, and siblings, so four total. Two are rising fourth graders, employees, parents and siblings. So four total come off of that list. Um, and when you look at the numbers you just mentioned, 37 plus what we already know, 479, that puts us over capacity.
Right, that's, that's where I know where I'm at. I'm questioning like, if we go down this road and we grandfather these children, which I'm not saying is the wrong thing to do, we're right back where we started already. So.
But there's, there's, um, you can take out, like, so when you look at fifth grade, I think there's a ton of fourth graders.
Yeah.
Ton of fourth graders, but when you look at the fifth grade, and I'll, I'll start with Locust, um, there were 19 on there, uh, fifth graders and siblings, and rising fifth graders and siblings. So they're currently fourth graders, rising fifth graders and siblings. Now we know that four of those can be removed. So you're down to 15. So 15 at Locust plus to 479. Where you, you know, you're, you're, you're right there. I mean, that's 494.
So we're looking at option one versus option two. Are we doing enough to not have to make these kids' lives? Because it looks like we're not gonna have to die here. We're gonna be right back where we were in a couple of months. Almost, or can we still play?
If you don't grandfather, we know we're in 479.
Right.
You know, if, if you grandfather fifth grade, we're six seats to capacity. If you take them all, you're over capacity.
Right. Um, so. And it's gonna be very hard for me to say, well, you had a transfer in the past and a grandfather, you've got a new hardship coming and be like, maybe like, uh, um, you know, who's to say one person's hardship works? You know, you know what I'm saying?
The difference is with fifth grade, we don't have, the, the, the consideration that I go through in my mind is you don't have K3 class size mandate. And even under the known numbers, we still come under capacity. My question on it, maybe for Dr. Dennis or Dr. Murray, is if we took, um, of those 15 that are remaining, mostly fourth graders and a few siblings, rising fifth graders, how, how would that affect class size? Like for fifth grade, so if we have three fifth grade teachers or classes, and I'm not sure how many at Locust, for example, because the impact is a little less than you. Um, does that make our classes, you know, is it add four, five classes? Is it two, four?
Yeah, because I had them out at schools.
So, um, basically we did look at the status right now, which we're looking at four fifth grade classes, 24 fifth graders per class. With the extended boundary, we're looking at we can do three classes because we're reducing focus, we need students per class.
When you say extended boundary, what do you mean?
To move in that extra.
That's how it's gonna change when you put the line. That's about any grandfather or.
Okay, option one. So option one goes to 28 students.
And how many less classes?
One less class. Option two.
Does that save the, sorry, does that save the district on any finances or?
No, because the staffing will shift based on where the students.
So no financial impact plus or minus if we're going to, okay.
Option two, we're still only at three fifth grade classes at Locust, but lowering the fifth grade class size to 25.
What are they now?
So if I'm hearing you correctly, we've got four fifth grade teachers in classes now, and if we kept four classes, then, or three classes, there's no financial impact either way. So we don't save money. It doesn't cost us any more money.
We're not, we're not losing students. They're just moving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's no financial impact of lower classes or expand classes. So we could, if we had four classrooms under option one and took fifth grade.
Then there is a, a financial impact. So we're, so we're applying essentially classes based on state limits. So we're looking at four, uh, trying to keep the numbers 28 to 30. So right now we're at 27 to 30, can be read. Um, they can go to 35. I mean, there is a type of 45. But if we just, so that where you say is you wanna add an additional teacher?
No, I want to make sure the number's right. You say that if we go to three classrooms under option one, with no grandfathering, we go to 28 kids a class.
Well, and see, I did not have the.
That's 84 kids.
So I'm looking at, what I did, what I did on numbers is I took current student numbers, current membership, and then so there's fourth graders, right now we have 99 students enrolled in Locust, I shifted that to the third grade. So if they're already there, I'd refer to it further, counting four in my numbers.
I guess what I'm saying is if we have four classes right now in fifth grade.
Three right now.
Three right now at 28th class.
Thirty grades.
They're like 34 or 5.
Okay, I guess I got confused on that. I'm sorry. What, what do we, so we start, what do we have right now in the fifth grade?
I'm a visual person.
Yes, that would be amazing. Whatever the y'all are in, it's, you're gonna see Indy, that is.
In the option one, in the option two. That's not how it had been labeled. I'm sorry. You'll see, option one says added, option two says extended.
Okay.
But my chart extends, sorry. But at the top of the chart, you'll see current numbers, and then the bottom section of the chart is looking at numbers predicted for next year. So that added is option.
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
And then we've also included, the principals put together a map of where they would put this staff.
We're going from 40 fifth graders to 79.
And these numbers are based off of my faculty average daily membership.
If I, if I'm looking.
This is, this is Indy school?
Yes, the first one is Indy.
So where's the Locust standing?
So that's what we look at our projected numbers.
Um, so, so 99 is currently a fourth grader. But are there any of those going out? So I guess is the projected number include option one?
The first one, when it just says Locust, that is Locust as it is right now today. Those are the numbers projected for next year. Then the next page that says Locust reduced actually replace option one. That's why I've been the language team.
So when I, I'm just trying to follow the stuff here. I don't. We, I see Locust reduced, but I see the same numbers at the top.
Yep, so that's still just this year's numbers. So if I look at the bottom section of the projected, what was left, under that last year.
Okay, and so then we're looking, going from as it sits now to the reduce is one year ahead.
Yes.
Because it's got the same numbers on, you got the same numbers on Locust and Locust reduced to be the.
At the top, at the top, that's current numbers.
But you're saying that on Locust reduced, the projected is moving those grades up?
Yes, sir.
Not, not taking the existing fourth grader sitting at fourth grade.
The ones that, um, technology and transportation provided that would be moved based on the changing boundaries. Does that make sense?
I think I know what you're asking. Your, your asking is that current fifth grader or is that fourth grader that's gonna be that right now? That's right.
Yes, because we got two sets of data. Like everything's existing until we got one little spot over here that.
Fifth grade projection, is that current fourth graders right now?
In the projected, yes.
Okay.
So 28th class, four, three classrooms, that's the current fourth graders now.
That'll be option one, yeah.
So. So that would be, so we go.
What was the summer kindergarten last year? Project 75 or what?
So where did I get the number?
When, when was the last year?
Then we got you.
Yeah.
Fifth grade. Right.
That's what I'm saying. Some of them are not gonna come and sign up ahead of time, Paul. I mean, here's some.
That, I'm just saying, it's, it's a far part of the page. It's not everything.
To predict kindergarten numbers, in average of next year's projected, first and third grades in the last thirty years have been rolling, took that average, you know.
You're right, Paul. Yep.
This one you have to monitor very closely.
So Locust, we don't have the class size of family kindergarten.
Right, that's, that's, that's what I'm getting at. When we say we're moving and we're moving to alleviate, and we're still gonna be able to class size mandate, that's a problem. Um. They're all gonna be right, right at it. That's, that's, I'm, I'm not against movement because I know we need movement, but what I'm saying is we're moving this to turn around and next, I wish we're gonna be sitting right here with the same problem we're sitting at right now. We're over mandate sites and we're almost completely full.
Top of the Z kindergarten.
Twenty seven.
Eighteen, twenty one. Eighteen's your average for the district we work today. That's why the two got different rates.
It's confusing.
Yes. So we're over at Norwood, it's gonna affect that. Well, Norwood, Norwood had a, had a class size way for last year.
There's.
For K3? I don't know, we've created.
That's a real deep lesson in third grade, in third grade question.
We're, we're, we're hovering at 160 students to end up back in the same situation we're in right now.
What, what message is there?
Right, we need to take a decision and make sure that when we move people, we're doing it effectively so that we don't stay right where we are. And in, in twelve more months, we're staying here having to move again.
Uh, Jerry, I need to be excused. He's sorry. I need to be.
I didn't know. I'm afraid.
Can we do a recess?
If it's okay with this, we would like to just take maybe a 10 minute recess. Want to do that?
Yeah. I can plug that right below that, so if you'd like.
I think one thing to look at too is I had Sean pull some numbers of what the classes would look like, individually, what's your class numbers. Yeah, you're great.
Fifteen, 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 except for one is 20. I mean, that's a simple way of looking at it. Your kindergarten, first grade was 20 students, this is option one, this is option one. Locust, in other words, Locust kids moving under option one scenario to end. All of them came out 15, 15, 15 and 15, except for first grade was 20.
In here or out?
This is Locust kids moving in the, under option one to end. In other words, it's almost, it's the numbers for each grade level is
Even.
Even, except for it was more first graders. And you don't know your kindergartners. That makes sense? But I thought that may be helpful just to.
But if we're looking at this number, it says kindergartners, there's five teachers, there's 89 educators currently. That's one is 17.8. And then we have more. Maxing is 18 or 20. No, no. The average. Yeah.
Checker's job.
That's 22, 23, or like you're 18th grade, 20th second. But don't we have to average it? Okay, so you can't say that because we know where I'm at.
Let's go ahead and call us into recess for 10 minutes if y'all can just kind of. We'll take a 10 minute recess and we'll be back.
We're, we're, we're over to being a hundred and sixty students to end up back in the same situation we're in right now.
What, what message is there? Something? Thanks. Awesome. Thank you.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So.
We need to take a decision and make sure that when we move people, we're doing it effectively, so that we don't stay right off where we are. And in, in twelve more months, we're staying here having to move again.
Now, Jerry, I need to be excused.
Wrong.
He's sorry.
Wrong.
I didn't mean to say he was one of them.
I didn't know. I'm afraid.
Yeah, I don't know. Sorry, you're looking at all these. Except. Can we do a recess? That's it. Real. Okay. Cheers.
Ms. Hendrick, I know you were in the, in the middle of, of going over your scenarios, and I don't, I don't know if you want to run back over those numbers, or if anybody has any specific questions about the option one and the option two. Those are labeled as reduced and extended reduction, so.
Can you just tell us, um, from what we have seated right now, to what we would have seated in option one, especially in like, um, those K three areas?
Agreed.
Yeah, at Locust and Stanfield, if you'll just tell me so that I can get it kind of in my mind.
Well, if we were to keep, so. If we were to keep exactly what we are, and I guess we make sure I understand your question. You guys have the answer, sorry.
I think I have an answer. Um, so when I'm looking at these two charts.
Yes.
What we have now, prior to moving the line.
Is just that first one that's.
Right. Versus, I want you to set for everybody, um, what we would have if we moved to option one.
That would be a slight reduction at Locust, around an estimated five classrooms.
But what would the student number?
The student number would reduce from five hundred and sixty-four, which is what we're currently predicting for next year, should nothing change, to four hundred and sixty-two. That's my prediction, if we go with option one.
Well, let's note that the Mike Miller's projection says four seventy-four.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah.
And so, um, said to Keith, I said, this is all about her than mine.
He didn't include transfers.
He did not.
I mean, he did, sorry, he did include transfers.
So that is a net.
But she is too.
That's a net of how many.
She's taking existing, we got to roll off of what the demographers, and no disrespect to your forecasting abilities, but we have to go with what the.
Right, because that's, he's on the grid line.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure that, so.
Her numbers are, everything stays the same, this is what's happening. He's got a value included metric in the.
Right.
For, for. I think one thing, when having this conversation, I just want to bring out, and I know the board knows this, and I spoke with our legal counsel, he kind of made this, uh, put this forward, so I'm just kind of repeating what he is, I'm not that smart, but, uh, anyway. We want to be in a situation, no matter what we decide, that we don't have a bunch of empty classrooms sitting somewhere, but we're not back here tomorrow, have, or by tomorrow, I mean next year, having the same conversation about having to move people. And like you said, he can always appeal it, or he or she or whomever, family can always appeal it up to the board, if they don't like to move. And of course, if this, if we don't find it a hardship, they will get their chance to appeal it directly.
His recommendation was option one, because that fits into the longer term view of having a new Oprah school and affecting.
Talk about Mike Miller, right?
Like your term of democracy.
Now, even the attorney didn't say anything.
Yeah, okay.
That's.
So, if I'm looking at it right, essentially by moving, and if I just look at Locust, we're creating twenty-ish spots, twenty seats, is that? Is that right?
Creating twenty.
Well, or, or allowing for twenty students.
You mean for overall capacity?
Yeah.
So, according to the projection, we're at four hundred and seventy-four, or ninety-five percent, uh, plus four employees that are involved in the redistricting, the children that would get approved on a transfer back, plus one employee's children, child in the portal. So that's five added to that, that's four seventy-nine at Locust, and then four thirty-nine total at Stanfield, so.
But how many?
Ninety-five percent capacity.
Okay.
And where does Indy sit at all this?
If we go with option two, so Mr. Ben, Dr. Caswell, and I, and Walt, Indy and Stanfield, like last week, we did not get to Locust. Um, if we go with option two, with Indy, they're going to be passed completely out again, including the addition. So they will have no room for growth if we use option two.
So option one.
Option one is still on. I don't know, we're grieving Roman, I mean, I don't know.
What are we looking at?
What is that number?
What are we looking at?
If you're still going to, every classroom is going to be full. We look at possibility of. Um, you know, talk about like, we're trying to decide too, because we've got some EC separate setting classes, and so that's going to play into physical classroom space as well, and what's the best decision to do with that, which is why we went out and walked the schools.
Are we going to have the facilities ready for those students if we?
I'll say this, that the facilities still need to be ready if we leave.
So I'm, I'm going to go for leaving those students if we don't have facilities ready.
Because, because we need to, we'll have, we'll have to get that right now, but that will be a district decision based on what we have with money and capacity.
Is, is that, is that federal law decision?
So what is, what's the, what's, what's the number when you're looking at option one, Indy?
Which, I'm sorry, are you asking? So we're looking at a total of potentially five hundred and twenty-one students, twenty-seven classrooms, we include the D M R classrooms in there. Uh, and so at the, um, Indy element right now, it's provided by, um, Indy adding, you'll see that there are very few, um, open classrooms, the ones that have no names on them. Um, she is looking at, that would be, I can see that we need to be filled with all those classrooms, we should still have all kind of empty classrooms.
Okay.
What would be the difference between with option one then, since we're off talking about option two?
So if, if we went to option two, we then have to reallocate certain classroom spaces that they have available. For example, um, they've got music in a classroom, art in a classroom, um, guidance, they've got, um, P L C room, all of that would have to go to make room, make those into classrooms.
You have the art and car kind of thing.
So we did a ten-room class, ten-classroom addition of art and music. I can take away a P L C.
Ms. Hendrick, I know you were in the, in the middle of going over your scenarios and I don't, I don't know if you want to run back over those numbers or if anybody has any specific questions about the option one and the option two. Those are labeled as reduced and extended reduction, so.
Can you just tell us, from what we have seated right now to what we would have seated in option one, especially in like those K three areas?
Andy?
Yeah, at Locust and Stanfield, if you'll just tell me so that I can get it out of my mind.
Well, if we were to keep, so if we were to keep exactly what we are, and I guess we make sure I understand your question. You guys again, sorry.
I think I'm asking. So when I'm looking at these two charts.
Yes.
What we have now, prior to moving the line.
Is just that first one that's.
Right, versus, I want you to set for everybody, what we would have if we moved to option one.
That would be a slight reduction at Locust, around an estimated five classrooms.
What would that student number?
The student number reduced from 564, which is what we're currently predicting for next year, should nothing change, to 462, that's my prediction, if we go with option one.
Well, let's note that Mike Miller's projection says 470.
Yeah, I noticed that, and so I said to Keith, I said, this is all about her than mine.
He didn't include transfers. I mean, he did, sorry, he did include transfers.
So that is a net.
But she is too.
That's a net of how many.
She's taking existing, we got to roll off of what the demographers, and no disrespect to your forecasting abilities, but we have to go with what the.
Right, because that's, he's on the grid line, so we need to make sure that.
Her numbers are, everything stays the same, this is what's happening, he's got a value-included metric in the.
Right, right.
I think one thing when having this conversation, I just want to bring out, and I know the board knows this, and I spoke with our legal counsel, he kind of made this, put this forth, so I'm just kind of repeating what he is, I'm not that smart, but anyway, we want to be in a situation, no matter what we decide, that we don't have a bunch of empty classrooms sitting somewhere, we're not back here tomorrow, have, or by tomorrow, I mean next year, having the same conversation about having to move people, and like you said, he can always appeal it, or he or she or whomever, family can always appeal it up to the board if they don't like to move, and of course, if this, if we don't find it a hardship, they will get their chance to appeal it directly.
His recommendation was option one, because that fits into the longer-term view of having a new Oprah school and affecting.
Talking about Mike Miller, right? Yes, yes, now even the attorney didn't say anything, that's.
So if I'm looking at it right, essentially by moving, and if I just look at Locust, we're creating 20-ish spots, 20 seats, is that, is that right?
Creating 20.
Well, or allowing for 20 students.
You mean for overall capacity?
Yeah.
So according to the projection, we're at 474, or 95%, plus four employees that are involved in the redistricting, the children that would get approved on a transfer back, plus one employee's children, child in the portal, so that's five added to that, that's 479 at Locust, and then 439 total at Stanfield, so 95% capacity.
Okay.
And where does Indy sit at all this? If we go with option two, so Mr. Venn, Dr. Paswell, and I, we involved Indy and Stanfield like last week, we did not get to Locust, if we go with option two, with Indy, they're going to be passed completely out again, including the addition, so they will have no room for growth if we use option two.
So option one.
Option one is still on, either grieving room, I mean, or.
What are we looking at?
What is that number?
What are we looking at? If you're still going to, every classroom is going to be full, we look at possibility of, you know, talk about like, we're trying to decide too, because we've got some EC separate setting classes, and so that's going to play into physical classroom space as well, and what's the best decision to do about, which is why we went out and walked the schools.
Are we going to have the facilities ready for those students if we?
I'll say this, the facilities still need to be ready if we leave.
So I'm, I'm going to go for maybe those students if we don't have facilities ready.
Because we need to, we'll have, we'll have to get that right now, but that will be a district decision based on what we have with money and capacity.
Is, is that, is that federal law decision?
So what is, what's the, what's the number when you're looking at option one, Indy?
Which, sorry, yes. So we're looking at a total of potentially 521 students, 27 classrooms, we include the DLA classrooms in there, and so at the Indy element right now, as provided by Indy adding, you'll see that there are very few open classrooms, the ones that have no names on them, she is looking at, that would be made to see that we need to be filled with those classrooms, we should still have all kind of empty classrooms.
Okay. What would be the difference between with option one then, since we're off talking about option two?
So if we went to option two, we then have to reallocate certain classroom spaces that they have available, for example, they've got music in a classroom, art in the classroom, guidance, they've got PLC room, all of that would have to go to make room, make those into classrooms.
You'd have the art and car kind of thing.
So we did a 10-room class, 10-classroom addition of art and music, not go out of there and take away a PLC room.
So it sounds like option one.
So that's either or.
It is a decision. So it's.
It's, it's, I think when we started, they wanted to do six or eight, we got 10. We, was I not accurate, originally, I think they brought us a six to eight classroom addition, and we opted to 10. Use more.
The, the one thing about Indy too, is just to reiterate, you're maxed in adding a classroom.
Yeah, there's no more.
You're, you're, you're done.
There.
Yeah, you're out of room and you're out of.
So.
So many other components.
With that, if anybody knew it moves into Indy, then what, we were putting all these students to Indy, so now we have no room at Indy, we just created what the situation we have at Locust and Stanfield at Indy.
A lot of your growth at Indy though, if I'm looking at that spreadly, would be like the ones that were, Alabama was looking at that bridge, like stuff that you all can control.
It's a choice school, anybody can go to Indy.
For DLA.
Yes.
But it's a districted plus a choice option.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, August, August, let's say any of these kindergartners that don't want to go to the Stanfield, they can all apply to go to Indy.
But to add to that, if we were to do a suggestion of, okay, you move into Stanfield and Locust, you, these schools are full, you can't go there, I mean, where are they, if Indy's full, where are we going to?
Exactly, there's nowhere for them to go.
Aquadale's full, so you can't tell somebody from Stanfield to go to Aquadale.
Or, I was wrong, I just.
It's important to note that K three, and I, and I'll clarify it myself first, when th- these capacity numbers are pulled from DPIs, correct, for the building?
The building, the building numbers I got come directly from a spreadsheet that Todd had shared with me and Mike.
And I, I thought I remember Mr. Miller saying, this DPI number shows that factors are K three class size mandate, but our choice is not subject to the general statute, so you don't have to do K three Indy, DLA program under the general statute, so you can add 20 kids to a kindergarten class versus a 18. So you can go over that number, but K three class size mandate does not apply to the choice.
To the DLA program, that's correct.
To the DLA.
Typically, we try to fill 25 in kindergarten in the DLA program.
Yeah.
And there is a certified co-teacher in that classroom, which alleviates, you know, instructional, the issue of the pressure there, the 25 also allows for fluctuation of the program, when somebody moves in, unless they're moving in from a DLA school, you can't put them in that DLA classroom, so some of our numbers at Indy, if you look at the progression from kindergarten to mid-grade, we've got some really low numbers in the DLA program because of movement, as you get into those upper grades, which will then in turn impact the middle school program, so we're looking at numbers of 14 to 17 in a classroom, that's going to grow all the angel shaping classrooms, because we're still allotting for that whole number of students, does that exist?
It's an average, yeah, it can be over, but it's still an average.
Well, there is a cap, so there's the average for K three, but then there's also the cap, so kindergarten cannot go to 21, here.
Right, so, so what I'm, what I'm getting at is, let's say, we tell 12 kindergartners at Locust, that they are going to have to go to somewhere else, or, I, I don't know, I'm just.
Well, what's going to end up happening is, we're going to run over the state capacity.
Right.
So until the county builds new construction, we'd sit here all afternoon to talk about these numbers, but the reality is, if someone moves into Locust and Stanfield, and we've got 18 in a class, we're going to have 20 in a class, we're going to have 25 in a class, because there's, there is.
There's for labors.
And general statute of law says you got to teach them, allow them into the school.
Right.
But then the general statutes also say, your county's by constitution responsible conveying ability, bill buildings.
Right, and, and it's on funding mandates, so if we have to get another teacher, that's out of Locust.
That's out of local money.
Not state money.
Yep, if it doesn't fall within the allotment, you can't shift them around like she mentioned, even though the county still assumes the insurance, the 401K, and the pension, the county picks up that for every teacher, state just covers the salary.
Right.
So there's no way around new capacity, new construction for the, the western end.
I think that's a given, and you know, and I think we can sit here and we can keep rehashing the numbers, and it's not that the numbers are not important, they are important, I agree, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it may be a stark reality that we built 10 new classrooms at Indy, and when we finish doing everything that we need to do to move that line, we're somewhat where we were when we started, but that line has to be moved, there's, there's no way getting around that, we have to move that line to populate that school, it is going to give a little bit of pressure relief to Stanfield and Locust, which was our goal, so at the end of the day, it's about where that line's going to be, and moving, moving that realignment, and making that decision.
And I'm disagree with anything that you said, I just want to make sure that if we're inconveniencing 160 students and families, that we take a hard and fast look at grandfathering, transfer, all of that at the same time, because we need to be equal with our situation and decision, and we can't move students to a school that don't have the facilities that are even under federal law, I will, I will say that, and I don't know if we decide to do that, 100%.
I will say, no matter which school I leave them at, I'll have to do facilities in the school.
But that's not part of the board vote.
Right.
So we got to make that clear, that we're not voting on where separate says.
No, I'm, I'm just saying.
That's not a board decision, so you, you're voting, you'd say no on something that we don't vote on, I mean, you can be against it, but that's a conversation to have.
Yeah, I, I just think that.
But here, we got to make a vote on what's the best option that can solve our problems now, fit within the vision to solve growth for the future, and affect the least amount of families as possible.
Right.
And there's, there's no great options without new capacity, and we've got to.
Huge effects to families if you move separate setting students, I can tell you that from personal experience.
But it's not a board vote, that's not what the board votes on.
We're voting whether to move those students or not.
We don't vote whether to move separate settings or not, we're voting on where the line is, and if.
We're separate setting students within that line.
I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, but the decision on whether we're moving separate settings.
That classroom.
That's not the purview of the board.
I think what we're saying is.
I'm not talking about the classroom, I'm talking about the specific student, what you're saying when you're moving, their students are.
So what would you be a no on the line, we've got option one or option two, we've got to redistrict, and you clearly noted that in all of your capacity numbers, which I would agree with.
Yeah.
So we have to vote on an option.
Yes.
Yeah, but you're, you said you would be a no, but we only have.
I'm not moving those students, and we are sitting here talking about grandfathering and transfers and all that, that needs to be taken into account also.
I believe the board has done extensive due diligence in considering that, transfers and grandfather.
And the separate setting, needs to be a part of that also.
I understand, that's not a part of a motion to vote on separate setting, but we would have. You said, you said you were voting no, but that would not be a vote on the transfers or line.
I'm going to vote on those students that are caught up in that line.
And I think like Dustin said, that, that, at the end of the day, that is Dr. Dennis' decision.
And he takes direction from us.
He does, and I understand what you're saying about the students who are classified that, and those are students that we're going to have to live differently than, than any other student, they can't be lumped in with the other students, and I think we all understand.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
And I think that's something that, you know, Dr. Dennis is aware of what needs to happen, no matter where those students.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask front of rearticulated, I don't even want to change the idea about separate setting kids, what are they doing from the two, because I hear about that too.
So we're talking about students that typically, if they move or transition from one setting to another, it can be a traumatic hardship, and I'm trying to say this without, you know, getting into student marriage or whatever, but there are different things in that scenario that would need to happen possibly to transfer those students from one school to another, it's not a typical transfer, I mean, we need to make sure that we take that into account of those students that are caught up in this, I don't know how many students that is, and that number's not even been brought up today.
Like this for my, for my own personal, you're not talking about moving out of separate setting.
No, they're going to still be separate setting students, we're just moving them from one campus to the other, and that's not going to look like what it looks like for typical students, yes.
Thank you, thank you for that, I'm glad.
Okay, any other discussion about transfers, grandfathering? We could hit on, but if anybody has any other questions, discussions, this work session is the time to do that.
I just want to make sure I understand what I'm kind of getting, Ms. Hendrick, to you.
I was writing things down, but with option one, and we are still looking at our number 479 Locust, we're looking at 439 Stanfield, we're looking at 521 Indy. Option two, we completely knock out Indy.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I want to hit that, okay, and then in those numbers, we've already, those numbers have already built in transfers that have already approved in the past.
Yes, ma'am.
All that is in those numbers. Grandfathering is the issue, I think, that we have to look at, because if we are grandfathering, then we're pushing those numbers on a, we're maxing on a, if we grandfather.
Are we currently with option one, going to be art on a car and no PLC room at Indy? No.
See, options.
Okay, I'm just making sure, following.
With option one, since this Papa mentioned that at Indy, with option one, because of alleviating that at Locust and Stanfield, we also are freeing up space where teachers hopefully are not going to have to be on cars or whatever with art or music as well, or we freeing that up for them as well with option one. I mean, I know it's still.
You're talking about it.
Locust.
At Locust.
And Stanfield.
I will, I will say this, even if we freed up from now, it would unfree itself as the numbers.
As the numbers. But in other words, I'll get saying, we are hopeful in that situation, we are hopeful in that situation.
The way.
All right, I want to bring up, I want to bring up one more thing that was mentioned too, and that is, I want to look at that, the best option that teachers are not going to be overloaded in their classrooms, because when you start getting more than 25, 26, those are large numbers, if we go to grandfathering in, okay, we're looking at numbers for teachers in some of these classrooms, I'll be, if I understood correctly, 33?
Two and one.
See, that's way too, I'm not doing that to our teachers.
We're not going to have teacher burnout, I mean, I'm.
I'm not, that's just way too much for teachers, and they have enough that they own their plate anyway and everything else that they do, so we've got to look at what's the best option, and we've got to make sure we make the right decision as far as like that grandfather, that we're not loading up teachers.
And just to add on to her point, with the question on the fifth grade, rising fifth graders, that's for three classrooms, but we have the ability as a system to reassign a teacher within the system, at no added cost in the system, to fifth grade, create a fourth, fifth grade class, which brings down the ratio of the fifth grade, we just push to the capacity number overall, but fifth grade would go to 25 a class versus 33.
Where would we be reassigned?
I don't know, that's.
So if you pull one from somewhere else, is that not going to make the number go up somewhere else? Okay, I'm just not, I'm not following how that angles out.
It's a question to see.
Yeah, yeah, I just.
To follow up that point, as, as the board is making that consideration, because I would agree with Mrs. Gibson, that 33 in classes.
Right.
That's extremely.
But what comes back to is the number of students, depending on the number of teachers, regardless of where we put these kids.
Right.
Based on ADN.
Yeah.
So we have, we have that problem already, those numbers may cringe a little bit, we're not, we can, we can't read district, build new schools, fix that problem, till the ADN numbers increase enough, close the school to get another teacher, and that doesn't want, it's a problem either, it just spreads out to another teacher.
I'm not, I'm wanting to open up something, I don't see it with grandfathers, but I want to, I, I know that we're concerned about the fifth, I have that, a grandfathering in, how many did graders, what's that?
Fifteen would come back in.
Fifteen, what are you, what, what are we doing with their siblings?
That includes the, well, there was 19 overall at Locust, of rising fifth graders that included two, three, or four siblings.
That's all.
That's all, but four of those, two rising fourth graders and their two siblings are employee children.
Okay.
So, but looking at the numbers here on this sheet, Mrs. Hendrick's sheet, that under option one, we would go to 84 fifth graders at Locust, the existing three classrooms, we'd lower the class size from almost 34 to 28, if we brought in 15 more rising fifth graders to make 99, then we're right back up to 33-ish, exactly 33, so it would, the question then is, do we have the ability to create another classroom to alleviate that teacher allotment, I mean, the, the, the teacher, the student ratio, one, do we have the space, can it happen, where would you, Mrs. Papa's question, where would we pull it from, what does that affect, there's downstream impacts to all of that, and overall, the student, the building holds 500 students, so if we take 479 and add 15 more, we're, we're right there, back to your point on Indy, well, if we wouldn't do it at Indy, why wouldn't we do it at Locust, so that sort of is the consideration, and I don't know the downstream impacts to what, that's a great point.
Yeah.
Where would you pull it from?
Pull it from somewhere, and that's going to be.
The teacher, the teacher was nicked at somewhere.
There'll be a ripple of that.
Right. Um, I mean, just scenarios, let's say you pull them from somewhere else, well, then their class size goes to 24 if they're on some.
I think what we're looking at is, if you're, if they're not going to Indy, that number they're likely number, so instead of, rather than any of these options with redistricting, we're probably going to have to look at staffing changes, because if numbers are reducing at Locust and Stanfield and increasing at Indy, the staff have to follow the students, so if we didn't move all 15 of those to Indy, we might be able to classroom off of Indy and put it back at Locust.
Which is 99% capacity.
Yeah, which, that's going to give us that HR wriggling effect, and the teacher doesn't want to move to the school, or isn't, we haven't even talked about that. Uh, we haven't even talked about that.
Anything else? I, you know, I definitely think we've, we've hit on a lot of topics today, and that are definitely things that are for future discussion, um, that are not problems that, that this realignment's going to take care of.
I would like to say one thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my team for all the hard work they've done with coming here today and being prepared, and being able to gather information, uh, Disney, so thank you.
We, we do appreciate that, the work that you've done, and Sean and his team, and setting things up, and being able to live stream, and, um, it doesn't just happen. So, so we do, we're very appreciative.
Well, I think it's this, this Whitaker too, that, that...
Elliot.
That...
Oh, I thought you were pointing to the screen, I was like, great, great.
But I mean, every, everyone, yes, I think that all of that, it's our board. I mean, I think that we have worked well with the fact that I feel good we have made some progress. We've got a beautiful new addition, okay, at Indy, and we see still that the growth is there and in our schools, and I, I hope that, at least for me, it kind of igno- ignites even more of a fire under me with the fact that we've got to continue to push forward with, whether, whether we get these base grants as far as what we're putting on there with the addition, uh, at West Stanley Middle to include a, a new gym as well, a new Oakborough, okay, with a capacity of six hundred, seven hundred, with a new gym as well. But we see that, just by what we're doing right here, yes, it helps a little bit, but we've got to continue to attack the growth that's there. And, and I mean, I applaud the board because of, and I applaud the fact that for years, or what, five years? That we've had a committee of three people working with three commissioners. We continue to do that. We, we just have to continue to move forward, and we're making steps, but, you know, we've got to continue, we realize what we're going to be facing now three years down the road.
Well, only that, you know, buildings don't make classrooms, but we have to make sure that we have all the information so that we can take care of our students and staff and families the best we can. I think that today was pivotal for some of us that haven't been in all the conversations to get all the information, um, in one place. Um, because for me, I had, you know, some numbers here, some numbers there, not knowing how many are in the portal as far as coming through. Um, but at the end of the day, you know, we're growing, we're growing the students, so we're doing things that people are attracted to, people would be mov- moving here. Um, and yes, new buildings are nice and are always enjoyed, but we have to make sure that we're going about it in the right way, and I think that this board taking the time to answer everybody's questions and having it open for the public to see is vital in that process, so.
I agree with that. It, it is a process, and it is good for the public to be able to see that. Um, I, this board is, we're moving forward. It's, um, you know, and I've said before, it, it doesn't matter how small the step, step is, as long as we're taking some steps, and I feel like we're doing that. Um, though we just have to continue to try to foster that relationship with our commissioners, and to try to get them to see our need, and I think they are at least open to that, and, and, and it's evident that they, you know, they have gone out of their business in our schools, and, uh, which is something I don't think they've done in a long time. So I'm, I'm appreciative of that, and we're just going to continue to move forward. So I appreciate everything this board does. It's, uh, it is, uh, it's time consuming, especially with what we have going on right now, but it's so big a work that when you see just that little bit of progress that we're able to make, so. Um, if no one has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor?
Time, ma'am.